Good evening and welcome to the West Sacramento's 2022 Candidates Forum, presented by the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce. I'm here just to give you a brief reminder of the rules for tonight's forum. First and foremost, this is not a debate. We intend to ask our candidates thoughtful questions and get thoughtful answers. We also will ensure that the candidates are given the same amount of time and are switched, which who goes first and who goes second for each question. We want the viewers at home, all of you, to be able to draw contrasts between the two candidates. We're going to ask all of our candidates to be very specific in their answers, and I, as the moderator, will reserve the right to ask follow-up questions as I see fit. For all of you at home, though, we also encourage you to be a part of this discussion. So if you have questions for the candidates, please put it in the chat. Our team will do the best to gather the themes and overall comments, and we'll be asking the candidates' questions towards the end of each session. Thanks for being here tonight, and we look forward to a great discussion.
Hello, West Sacramento residents and business leaders. My name is Jesse Salinas, and I am the Yolo County Register of Voters. It is an honor and privilege to welcome you to the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce Candidates Forum. Yes, it is election time again, with the 2022 general election coming up on Tuesday, November 8th. Yolo County officially became a Voters' Choice Act county in March, which means voters have more ways and more days to return their ballots. In West Sacramento, ballot drop boxes are available from October 10th through 8:00 p.m. on election night on November 8th, and are located at City Hall, Nugget Market, and State Food Supermarket, formerly Artieegas. The City Hall ballot drop box is an exterior drop box that is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Interior drop boxes are available during the store's regular business hours. In West Sacramento, City Hall Galleria Rooms are available for 11 days as a vote center. It will be open Saturday, October 29th, through Monday, November 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Election Day, November 8th, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Additional vote centers will be open for four days in West Sacramento at Bridgeway Lakes Boathouse, at Bright C C T as well. These locations will be open from Saturday, November 5th, to Monday, November 7th, also from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Election Day from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. At vote centers, voters can return their vote-by-mail ballot and register and vote regardless of where they live in Yolo County. Don't forget to register and let your voice be heard this November. For more information, visit us on social media or at our website, yoloelections.org. Thank you for being an engaged voter.
Good evening and welcome back. My name is Chelsea Minor, and I am proud to serve as tonight's moderator. We are back with our final Candidates Forum. I want to thank all of our viewers who have been with us throughout the evening. We're here with and joined by the West Sacramento City Council Candidates for District 4. I'd like to welcome Alex Hirsch and Verna Sulpizial-Hole. Pleasure. Thank you both for being here tonight. So as we talked about the last forum, we are now in District Elections for West Sacramento, and District 4 includes Southport from Jefferson Boulevard east to the Sacramento River, including a portion of Linden Loop. We're going to start tonight with your opening statements. Each of you will have two minutes to introduce yourself to our online audience and provide some background about yourself and why you're running for office. Prior to tonight, I randomly selected who will go first, and we're going to begin with Alex.
Well, thank you, Chelsea, and thank you to the chamber for hosting tonight's event. My name is Alex Hirsch, and I'm running for West Sacramento City Council because I love our community and I am proud to call it home. Like many of the viewers on the video tonight, I chose to call West Sacramento home because I know what a special community this is. I've lived here for almost a decade now, and I've become very involved in that time in helping make our community a better place. I've served as a board member for the West Sacramento Friends of the Library for many years, and in that role, I've had the opportunity to work with community members and community organizations to raise funds for our local library so that it can offer family-friendly programs at no cost to community members. I've served on city commissions, four of them, since 2015, and in that role, I've had the opportunity to really learn our city's local government issues, to see the challenges that we face and the areas that we can improve. In my day job, I have the privilege to serve in public service. I've worked as a professional, nonpartisan attorney for the California State Legislature, and I currently serve as a policy consultant in the California State Senate, where I helped to create innovative and successful housing and transportation solutions for communities all around our state. All of this has given me the real experience and the proven leadership record in West Sacramento to succeed on city council and hit the ground running on day one to make our West Sacramento a brighter place for us all. I've had the privilege of speaking with community members over the last few weeks to hear their concerns and to share my vision of what we can do in West Sacramento to make this a better place, a community where we have safer streets, a community where we have more job opportunities, and a community where we have greater parks, greater family-friendly amenities, greater affordable amenities for us all. I look forward to sharing more about my vision with you tonight, and I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Alex. Verna, two minutes for your opening statement.
Thank you. So my family moved to West Sacramento in 1987, which happened to be the year that the city incorporated, and the city and I have really grown up together. My life has been shaped by West Sacramento. My earliest memories include being a part of the group that started the West Sacramento Dolphin Swim Team, to learning to drive a stick-shift car on Jefferson Boulevard, which I do not recommend, and more recently, buying my first home and bringing my first son home to it. Growing up, I remember telling people that I lived in West Sacramento, and I told them to get off on Jefferson Boulevard, hang a left, and drive. And then keep driving, and when you think you've gone through too far, drive a little further. And then when you see the Pheasant Club, turn left, and that's the neighborhood I live in. Now I get to say, I live behind the Nugget Market in West Sacramento, and everybody knows exactly where that is. We've built an incredible community in West Sacramento, and I love it here. I've spent much of my career advocating and supporting families in West Sacramento in a variety of different roles, from supporting our small businesses and planning community events like the Fourth of July Bridge Fest and even the farmer's market at the barn in my work as president and CEO of the West Sacramento Chamber, to fundraising tens of thousands of dollars through the West Sacramento Foundation, through our Charities Raffle, which is kicking off this weekend, to now serving as a First Five Yolo Commissioner, where we focus on ensuring families with children under five are adequately supported. I've coached middle school volleyball, volunteered at a Community Day Parade, done fundraisers for the Yolo Crisis Nursery, and just last year, helped plan a community festival. There are a lot of reasons to run for office, but at the end of the day, for me, it comes down to one thing: love. Love for the community and love for people in the room, literally people in this room and people watching on TV tonight. I love this community, and I want to serve you. I want to reestablish access to affordable childcare, expand mental health resources, plan to take the lead in creating more family-friendly events at our local parks, and I'd love to work to expand our dining and social opportunities. Thank you for the chamber for being here tonight, and I look forward to the conversation.
Wonderful. Thank you both. Great start. I'm going to start the same way I did with our candidates in District 3. We shared earlier that people are often surprised to learn that our mayor and city council members are a part-time commitment. Each of you could have full-time jobs with little support from no staff that's dedicated to your office, no office and kind of a minimal salary. As you approach this new office, how do you prepare to handle the added workload of public service? And we're going to start with you, Verna.
Yeah, you know, you prioritize the things that are important to you, and I prioritize my family and I prioritize community service, and I'm already doing this work in the community right now. You know, specifically tactically, if elected, I'll step down from my commissioner role as a Yolo First Five Commissioner, which will create space, but a lot of the things I'm doing, I'm already doing now, and serving on city council will just expand that work. I think there's opportunity to look at the support that the city offers our mayor and city council members, whether that's a constituent services person or somebody to make sure that we are serving the residents of West Sacramento appropriately.
Thank you. Alex, same question to you. How will you balance the new challenges and opportunities that public service will provide?
Well, I think that's a great question, Chelsea, and I think it's something that's pretty eye-opening sometimes to West Sacramento residents, where they learn that our city council members, it's not a full-time position, it's not a full-paid job. What it really is, is a position of love, a love of wanting to give back and serve in our community. And I'm very fortunate to work in a professional setting, where I would have the opportunity to fully commit myself to serving our city council. I already do a lot of this as a planning commissioner currently in the city of West Sacramento. I've done it as a city commissioner since 2015. I do it in my position with the Friends of the Library. It's all about prioritizing those things that are important to you. And for me, giving back to the community is the most important thing to me. So to serve as an effective city council member, it's simply an elevation of the work and service I already do on city commissions. It's a little more time spent preparing for city council meetings, a little more time spent at hours-long council meetings that go into the night, a little more time spent during the day, because as a city council member, not only do you represent the community in the West Sacramento at city council, but you represent the community of West Sacramento regionally on many different regional boards that meet during the daytime. And so again, because of my day job in the California State Senate, I do have the support and the flexibility to give myself in every way to serve West Sacramento and to do this job well.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Just a reminder for our Facebook audience, please add your questions into the comment box. Our team is taking a look at those and shuffling them to me here this evening, so we welcome all of your questions and engagement. Alex, next question, we'll start with you. You know, I started this session reminding folks that this is District 4 in a very specific area of our city. Tell me what you believe are the top three issues facing District 4.
Well, I certainly think West Sacramento is a wonderful place, but we have a lot of work to do. And one of the biggest things we can do in the city as a whole, but especially in District 4, is improving our streets and making them safer and more people-friendly. District 4 serves a pretty large portion of the neighborhoods in our community. It includes the state streets in Westmore Oaks, it includes Southport going all the way down to Dave's Farm at City Limits. And so even in that diverse area, we could do a lot of improvements when it comes to repaving the roads, fixing the potholes, but also making the streets more people-friendly. We can have more protected bicycle lanes, we can have more marked pedestrian crosswalks, all the things we can do to make sure that our residents do have the ability to get around safely and smoothly. Another big issue in District 4 is the amount of park space. We are lucky in District 4 to have a mix of older neighborhoods as well as currently open lots for future development. And as we do that future development, and I hope to do it in a way that is smart and planned, where the growth is very focused, where the infrastructure is in place, it's important to also preserve park space and green space in those areas. A thriving West Sacramento community to me is one where every resident can live within walking distance of beautiful parks and beautiful community amenities. So that's a very big priority for me in District 4. Third priority for District 4 is making sure that we have a proper amount of job growth and retail options available for our community members. You know, I've lived in West Sacramento now for almost a decade, and in that time, there has always been at least one vacant storefront in the Southport Town Center. I want to do everything I can do on city council to make sure that we are recruiting new businesses to West Sacramento, to not only be job creators, but also to serve the community, so residents don't have to go to downtown to dine out or to run errands. Those are things I would prioritize.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Verna, same question back to you. Thinking specifically to District 4 and the individuals that will be voting for you, what do you believe are the top three issues?
That's a great question, and we've been talking to the same people, because absolutely improved infrastructure is the number-one concern of folks in our district. You know, District 4 is really interesting because we have the newer community, but also the state streets, which was built in the 50s, and so those neighborhoods need pothole repair, streets repaired. You cannot push strollers and wheelchairs around the sidewalks, and so making sure that we can get from A to B safely, whether you're walking or biking. There's a lot of neighborhoods that need simple solutions like stop signs and traffic calming measures, and I'd love to work with community members in the different neighborhoods to help identify that and help them advocate for themselves so that we can bring those type of traffic calming measures to the neighborhood. And then, you know, with all of our planned improvements, we need to make sure that we're educating our residents about what's going on, and that's one of the concerns I hear, that there's a lot of stuff happening, but people don't know what's happening with roads and infrastructure. So that's number one. Number two, support for families. COVID decimated our affordable childcare in West Sacramento, and I have a plan to bring that back. We have programs that are needed, from our after-school programs to summer programs to our active aging and senior programs, that we can invest more in to provide a community for everybody, depending on if you're a child or if you're in our senior aging community. And that includes giving opportunities for events, social dining opportunities, but just providing support for our families. And then finally, what I'm hearing from residents is we need to strengthen our partnership between the city and the county so that we're creating really strong education for our community. The city has a two-by-two that the city and county, excuse me, the city and school district meet, continuing those meetings and talking about how we can educate our community about the great schooling options we have, strengthening home-run programs so that we can prepare all of our residents and students in West Sacramento to live healthy futures in the workforce.
Wonderful. Thank you both. You both mentioned workforce. As a business and the chamber hosting this, we very much appreciate that sentiment. We've also talked a lot earlier this evening around equity, so I want to ask both of you, Verna, the first, this question will be directed to you. Given that we believe that equity is imperative to the path forward for economic prosperity, what industries do you believe are critical to inclusive growth in the city's economy and workforce?
Okay. That's a really great question, and I would say it is all of our industries. When we talk about equity, we need to be looking at all of our job markets in West Sacramento to make sure that we're representing our women-owned businesses, our minority-owned businesses, and that they're supported. You know, we hear stories all the time of these great local businesses that open but have issues negotiating rent and staying open. I think we have a lot of opportunity to support these retail businesses. You know, we talk about needing more local dining options. How can we step in and support these businesses to make sure that they can stay open when things aren't always fair and equitable for the smaller businesses? In 2018, we passed Measure N, which includes equitable investment for economic development, and I'd love to be able to support our smaller businesses, especially the ones on the retail front, with funding from Measure N. And you know, these are the conversations that I want to have with the local Chamber of Commerce. The Local Government Affairs Committee meets monthly. Those are conversations that I want to have with the chamber about what's working and what's not in West Sacramento, and where we're missing our mark. If we're going to create the community for everyone in West Sacramento, it's going to be built on partnerships, and the city and chamber have a great partnership, and I want to continue that partnership and make sure that these channels of communication are open, so we know what's working and what's not, so that the city can step in and support appropriately.
Verna? Alex, same question back to you. What industries do you believe are critical for inclusive growth in the city's economy and workforce?
Yeah, I think this is an excellent question, because equity is the lens through which I make any decision, both here in West Sacramento and in my day job. And so I know, in order to have a truly strong community in West Sacramento, we need to have a strong economy, a strong local economy where businesses can thrive and where people can find high-quality jobs. To me, what equity would look like in our local business climate is having support for all aspects of industry, for having more industrial jobs, for having more retail jobs, for having more office and commercial jobs, to have offices and businesses that are women-owned, that are minority-owned, that are veteran-owned. All of those can be achieved, and as Verna has said, I think a large role in the way that we can do this is by having our city partner with the Chamber of Commerce and making sure that we are attracting and supporting those sorts of businesses so that we can retain them. Many businesses go out of, close down within the first year, especially in the restaurant industry. I know this well, since I have family who worked in that industry. And so I would want to make sure, both as a city, as a community as a whole, as a chamber, all of us can work together to support our local businesses. I think many people watching this video at home, and many people I've talked to as I go around sharing my campaign and why I'm running, when I tell them my name, they recognize me, and they do that because in 2021, I had a New Year's resolution to support a different West Sacramento local restaurant every week of the year. And while that probably wasn't the best resolution for my waistline, it was my favorite resolution I have ever done. If you use the hashtag #TakeOutThursday on our West Sac Facebook community discussion board, or the hashtag #ShopWestSac, #DineWestSac, #SupportDreams, which is of course the West Sac Chambers platform that it had during the pandemic to support local businesses, you will find dozens of posts from me personally supporting our West Sacramento businesses, and that's what I would do on city council. Work with the community and support our businesses so that our community and economy can thrive.
Great. Thank you, Alex. This next question came from our viewers. We're going to start again with you, Alex. As a leader for District 4, do you support closing the port to ships and turning it into a recreation area?
I think that's certainly a very intriguing prospect, and I know that the port has been a large part of our community's identity for many years. It's been in operation since before we were actually a city, since we incorporated in 1987. But as the times change, I do think it's important for us to always be on the lookout for ways on how we can innovate our community and make our community stronger, to make it a place where people of all avenues can succeed and have a high-quality life. So while I wouldn't be informed in this moment to make a decision, I would fully support having those community conversations with community members, with residents, with stakeholders at the port, to see if continuing the port in its current form is the best thing for West Sacramento, or if looking at it from a different angle would be the best way to serve us all.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Verna, same question to you. Specifically, would, do you support closing the port to ships and turning it into a recreation area?
So this is a really fun question, because when I said we moved here in 87, it was for my dad to actually take a job at the port of West Sacramento. I grew up at the port, from at community events like Port Fest to jumping on the back of the trailer with my dad and other school kids to give tour of the ports. If my dad is walking tonight and he hears the term "deindustrialize the port," it is going to break his heart, but it's definitely something that we need to be considering. Right now, the port is used for a variety of different things. You know, the rowing club has activities there, it's walking and biking paths. What worked there 10 years ago might not work 10 years in the future, and so we have one opportunity to get development of the port right, either investing in making it the demand that it can be for the port industry, or we need to do something differently, being innovative in our solutions and being forward-thinking. That is not a decision I want to make on my own. I think it's important that we have very smart, educated folks with experience sitting on our port commission. I think it's very important that we reach out to community members. The port sits near residential property that needs to, and those residents need to be taken into consideration, but we need to look at what other cities have done in these spaces to really create the space of the future. And so I don't know what that would look at like now, but I absolutely welcome the opportunity to have these conversations, to look at folks who have done this type of work on riverfronts. When I was involved in the Urban Land Institute, we actually did a research of different communities with riverfront developments and what they did. There is a ton of resources and information out there for us to see what has worked and what's not worked in communities so that we can make the right decision for West Sacramento.
Great. Thank you, Verna. Another question from the Facebook audience that actually is very similar to what we heard in the District 3 forum, but was really looking at Southport, right? Both districts represent a much part of that, that part of our city. With the continuous and planned development, how do you ensure infrastructure-like schools and parks get developed alongside of the new housing to support those new residents? Verna, the question will go right to you.
So you said parks and schools, correct?
Correct. But I would say any infrastructure.
Any infrastructure.
Right? That would be a recreational use for residents.
Yeah. I think it's really important that we continue strong, healthy relationships with the development community so that we can have these conversations about what Sacramento needs. Not only do we need to expand our parks and open spaces, but with different developments, traffic calming measures, noise calming measures, all of those things need to be thought about, and we need to work in partnership with the developers to make sure that West Sacramento and our residents are benefiting from all of these new developments. And then it is absolutely our responsibility to hold folks accountable for what they promised the community, whether it's a new school or a new park or shade structures at the park. That is stuff that we have to stay on top of to make sure that everybody is playing their part, and all these pieces of the puzzle are integrated so that new developments, and these are smart and that are benefiting the community, so that West Sacramento residents get the investment that they deserve.
Thank you, Verna. Alex, same question back to you.
This is important, and I want the viewers at home to realize that this is one of the biggest questions we face in West Sacramento, especially in District 4, because we do have all the space for development, and we have this projected long-term plan for growth in West Sacramento. And so it's critical that as we do do that, we want to do it in a way that's smart, that's thoughtful, and one that accommodates all of the current and future needs that West Sacramentoans have. For the city and serving on city council, it's a good opportunity, when we work with the development community, to make sure that they are held accountable and that they are planning and constructing schools to accommodate the future student growth, that they are supporting new fire stations and new areas for us to accommodate the additional population growth and all of the fire and public safety demands and responses that that growth would entail. As I mentioned earlier, one of my biggest priorities is parks and family-friendly amenities, so it's important that we make sure that the developers include parks, that they include these green spaces and recreation spaces, so that our residents, both current and future in West Sacramento, aren't living in a concrete jungle, but have those areas where they can enjoy a high quality of life. It's important to make sure that we have walking trails that connect not just the new communities with each other, but to the existing parts of West Sacramento. We want to make sure that there are many options for people to get around town, that they don't always have to rely on their private cars, because if that's what they would do, we would certainly have congestion as we have future growth, and that's something we want to avoid in West Sacramento. As we plan ahead, we want to make sure that we're accommodating all forms of transportation: bicycle, pedestrian, transit, private vehicle, anything and everything to avoid congestion on the roads, because that is the number-one thing we will see in West Sacramento if we aren't doing our growth smartly. So for all of these reasons, I hope you at home are paying very close attention to this question, because this really is about the future of West Sacramento.
Thank you, Alex. We're going to move into the lightning round. Are we ready? So I'm going to ask each of you a series of questions. The answers will be, do you support or do you oppose? Please raise your hand if you support the policy I'm referring to, and please keep your hand down if you oppose. Let's start with, do you support West Sacramento approving retail cannabis within your district? Thank you both. Do you believe unhoused individuals have the right to camp on public property when shelter is available? Please raise your hand if you support, please keep your hand down if you oppose. Thank you. There is a proposed development of a new community in Southport known as the Liberty Project. It consists of 1,500 residential units, a 12-acre K-8 school, and up to 10,000 square feet of retail commercial plus parks and trails. Please raise your hand if you support the Liberty Project. Thank you both. Tonight, we've talked about, across the entire forum, about initiatives for the city. Many of those programs will cost additional money. In order to pay for those services, do you support new taxes? Please raise your hand if you support. Thank you both. Hold on. Oh, rent control, sorry. Rent control is a government program that places limits on the amount that a landlord can ask for a lease for a home or when renewing a new lease, or an old lease, excuse me. Please raise your hand if you support rent control. Please keep your hand down if you do not. Wonderful. Thank you both. Very much appreciate it. We'll go back to the questions. I've got a new one here from our Facebook audience. We will start this one with Alex. Sorry. How can you maximize opportunities to get federal dollars from the recently passed infrastructure deal within Congress?
Yeah, well, I would say, given my professional work experience for the last eight years in the California State Legislature, I understand how important it is to maintain those relationships, both at the state and federal level, because candid talk, West Sacramento, population of under 60,000, we are a relatively small city, and we can't do it all on our own. We do need that assistance from our federal and state partners to have the funding to meet our infrastructure needs, to make sure that our levies are strong and protect our West Sacramento residents, to have the bridges and safe roads so that our people can get around the community and around the region safely and smoothly. And so I would leverage all of the personal and professional relationships I have developed in my work in the state senate and in the state legislature, and build upon that to also further deepen my relationships with our federal representatives, to make sure that West Sacramento is as successful as possible when it comes to receiving matching grant funds, when it comes to receiving additional financial support. That's important for us, and that's really one of the main roles of a defective city council member.
Thank you, Alex. Verna, question back to you. How do we maximize opportunities for federal dollars with the recent infrastructure deal in Congress?
So this is a space that I think West Sac has done fairly well on historically. Congresswoman Endorsement Suey has been a superfan of West Sacramento, and one of her priorities, along with West Sacramentoans for the last 15 years, is flood protection. And, you know, I've made that one of my priorities. It's not very sexy, but you know, West Sac is generally an island, but it's been a priority for 15 years, and I'll continue making it a priority until our 200-year flood protection is ensued. And I believe we're in the final funding stages, and that's been done from years of relationships with our federal government and making sure that they understand the needs in West Sacramento. in West Sacramento. Partnerships are incredibly important. I think we have the opportunity to leverage our relationship with folks on the Sacramento side of the river, to make sure that we're advocating as a region for federal funding. And then we also need to get creative in how we're asking for funding and what we're asking funding for. And so looking at different models of funding our roads and our streets, and even, you know, just what we saw on West Capitol Avenue recently, making sure that partnerships are created, so that money can come from different sources and different buckets, so that we can create, we can continue the infrastructure improvements we've made and plan for the future. You know, I think also looking at what we can do countywide as well, you know, anything we're going to do in our region, you know, whether it's homelessness, transportation, housing, these are going to be regional partnerships, and making sure that we're having communications with our city government. I'm proud to be endorsed by the mayors of Davis and Elk Grove and Rancho Cordova in Sacramento, and these are relationships that we need to be working together, so that when we do go to Congress and tell them what we need in our region, that they take us seriously.
Great. Thank you, Verna. Next question's going to come right back to you. One of the number-one issues impacting our community is homelessness, not just here in West Sacramento, but you talk about partnering with some of our nearby cities. It's a significant challenge for our region. How would you, as a city council member, address the needs and challenges of the unhoused community, and those, of course, that it's impacting, whether that be residents or businesses? And if that would include any additional investments, how would you pay for that?
So in 2015, I was the executive director of the Floor and Road Partnership, which is a property and business improvement district in South Sacramento. And at that time, the number-one concern for business owners was issues related to homelessness. It is now 2022, and it is the number-one issue for businesses in West Sacramento. One of the ways we moved the needle in my time on Floor and Road is the city of Sacramento partnered with the County of Sacramento, with Sacramento Steps Forward, to bring a homeless navigator to work with our homeless community on, in the district, and build relationships and trust with these folks to give services. I think the city of West Sacramento has done a really great job in that sense, as we've taken a proactive approach with creating the community outreach and support team, so that we have a homeless response. We have a co-responder model, so that police, in addition to city staff, train city staff with mental health resources, are visiting folks that need help and services. We've been successful in Home Key Room Key, that needs to continue. Permanent supportive housing, 1801, West Capitol, incredible project, we need more of those. Studies have shown that 90% of people that go into those type of housing projects stay off the street permanently. That is a priority. We need to meet people where they're at. And then, you know, I think it's really important that we're looking long-term, and making sure that we understand who the homeless are in West Sacramento, and what programs can be implemented or expanded, like our Home Run Program, our Job Training Program, so that we can prevent homelessness. And then finally, how am I going to pay for this? I love that question, because one of my priorities that you can find on my website is the creation of a tourism improvement district, where we will work with the hotels to create a special financing district that will actually increase our TOT, which will increase our general fund, so that we can pay for a lot of these services.
Great. Thank you, Verna. Alex, same question back to you. How will you address the needs and challenges of those that are unhoused, and again, the implications that it makes to our residents and businesses? And if you are going to propose new investments, how will you pay for them?
Yeah, well, the impacts of homelessness, they affect us all. And it's not unique to West Sacramento. You know, we're facing a challenge all throughout California. And I see this in my day job, where in the state senate, I specialize on housing and homelessness solutions. So I've seen methods that have had proven results to help address homelessness, work in other communities. I would bring that here into West Sacramento. Homelessness is not something that you can wave a wand and it'll go away overnight, but there are both short-term and long-term ways that we can address this crisis. In the short term, we have a wonderful program here in West Sacramento called the Downtown Streets Team, that provides our unhoused community members with the ability to give back to the community, to feel that they're part of the community, not that they're an outsider to be feared. They clean our streets, they have that sense of Southworth, and by doing that program, they help address in the short term some of those most visible causes of nuisance, or fear, or public health concern, that sometimes are attached, sometimes fairly, sometimes unfairly, to our unhoused community members. All that said, in my mind, a compassionate approach to solving homelessness isn't one where we continue to let people camp out on the streets in front of businesses, posing as obstacles and making people unsafe, and feel afraid to go into our local railies on West Capitol Avenue, or other businesses in the community. The long-term approach to solve homelessness in California and in West Sacramento is to build more housing for them, where they can be safe and secure, and get the access to services that will help them remain permanently housed. We just opened the Mercy Housing Permanent Supportive Housing Project on 1801 West Capitol Avenue, as Verna mentioned. And that's a fantastic project, because it brings together not just stable housing, but connections to those mental health and job services to let these people stay on their feet. I would support a second permanent supportive housing project, and I would work with the state to find funding, so that we can continue that work here in West Sacramento.
Great. Thank you, Alex. Alex, this question will, we'll start with you. We all know that police and fire play an incredible and critical role to keeping our community safe. What investments do you think are needed to both of those departments to continue that level of safety, and if possible, level it up?
Well, this is a very important topic, because when it comes to local government, having a police and fire that is robustly funded and properly staffed to keep us safe is one of the primary roles of local government. And so I've had the opportunity now to speak with many members of our police department, many members of our fire department, and most importantly, many of our community members. And from them, I've heard some ways that we can improve our public safety and first responder support here in West Sacramento. When it comes to fire, just for example, Fire Station 45 on Lake Washington Boulevard opened almost 15 years ago. And at that time, it opened without another fire engine to properly meet the needs and demands in West Sacramento. In that time, now almost 15 years later, from conversations, we have seen the number of calls for assistance to our fire department triple. We have not seen any increase in terms of the fire equipment for that station, or for other stations. And in fact, at the time when it opened, one engine down, we are still one engine down from the original plan. This is very important moving forward, both in terms of the current population in West Sacramento, and in future growth, that we do have support, so that our firefighters have the equipment they need to properly respond to emergency calls in our city. The last thing we want is to live somewhere, perhaps close to the end of city limits, and find out that we're not able to be helped in one of our most dire times, because the fire department is all resourced out. Similarly, with our police department, through conversations with the community members, and looking at our police department compared to other police departments in similar-sized cities in the region, there is opportunity and a need to have a greater amount of police officer, patrol officers on the street. I think all of us have been affected recently by the sideshows. Late at night, the cars that close down intersections, that cause quality-of-life concerns. And oftentimes, we don't have enough officers to address those quickly. I'd make sure that we have the police and fire investment we need.
I love that. Thank you so much. Verna, same question back to you. What investments are needed to both police and fire to ensure and improve safety in our community?
So this is a really great question, and it's something that the city council has already taken up. Right now, the city council has brought in a public sector consultant to evaluate our police department, and figure out staffing and resources, and what's needed and what's not. And that report's supposed to come out in November. I sat in on one of the sessions with the consultant and listened to concerns from neighborhoods. And what's fascinating is, to me, safety is a feeling. There are people that do not feel safe in West Sacramento, and that's something that we need to take in deep consideration, and make sure that we are providing the safety that meets their personal needs. I'm really proud of our police department, that, of the 21st century policing that they've done, and continuing that model, so that we're working closely with the city and the police department and our residents, to provide the proper services to the community. You know, I've mentioned Measure N before, I'll bring it up again, 50% of that is to increase salaries and public safety. I know that nationwide police departments are struggling to recruit and retain employees. That's something that we need to be looking at, to make sure that we can bring in public safety officers, and give them the support that they need, and the adequate support. I know we had positions that we couldn't fill for a while, and so it was funded. So instead of just wiping the positions out, the Community Response Team and Co-Responder Model was created, so that the police would get their support that they needed. You know, again, I'll mention it again, all of this stuff is going to happen with partnerships, and having regular opening, regular open communication based on trust, respect, and communication, so that we can work together to address these needs, figure out how we're going to pay for them, to make sure that the entire community of West Sacramento feels safe.
Great. Thank you so much, Verna. This next question, I'm going to direct back to you. Project labor agreements require public infrastructure projects to have pre-hire collective bargaining agreements with one or more labor organizations. This usually establishes terms and conditions for employment for particular construction projects. For the city of West Sacramento public infrastructure projects, are you in favor of mandated economic workforce training related to labor agreements?
So I think it's really important that the folks who build this city are paid good wages, are given great healthcare, that includes maternity and paternity leave, and offered retirement. And one of the ways that we do that is through project labor agreements. And I'm absolutely in support of project labor agreements for public projects over a certain amount. You know, both Alex and I have been in multiple conversations with our local union and trade leaders about project labor agreements, and why they're so important, why local hire requirements, how they actually help the community, opportunities for apprenticeship programs. And so, you know, supporting these types of programs will ensure that we back our working class in West Sacramento, so that our community and everyone who's doing the work to build the community is supported well, and able to live in the community that they're working in.
Thank you, Verna. Alex, same question back to you.
Yeah, I think project labor agreements are a wonderful tool for publicly-funded projects, and there's many reasons for that. I'll give another example. Station 45, our fire station on Lake Washington Boulevard, opened brand-new, you know, barely 15 years ago, but a few years after it opened, there were already problems with the construction. And sometimes, the reason for these is because when it comes to public projects right now, we often go with the lowest bidder, where it would be better, perhaps, to go with the most cost-effective, responsible bidder. When we do that, when we have a project labor agreement to make sure that we have a skilled and trained workforce, that's paid well, that has the knowledge to build a project properly, we save money in the long run, because we don't have to come back a few years later to take care of costly repairs, to take care of damage that could have been avoided in the first place, if we had hired a skilled and trained workforce to create that project. Project labor agreements are also helpful, because they do make sure that the workers working on these projects, they have strong wages, they have strong health benefits, they're able to have a high-quality job to support themselves and their families. And oftentimes, when the city becomes involved, they can make sure that we also have local hire provisions, so that the people who are building these projects here in our city are actually our own community members, people who live in West Sacramento, who are proud to call it home, who can take their hard-earned earnings and reinvest it in the community when they support local businesses and local restaurants. All of these things are really helpful, and why I think project labor agreements are a great mechanism for these sorts of projects.
Great. Alex, we're on to our last question of the evening, and then we will move to our closing comments. So I'm going to kick this last one to you, and then, Verna, you'll help us close it out. The city, along with the West Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, has created incredible partnerships to leverage local funds with state and federal funding. What do you believe are the important investments that are needed to protect our city against flooding?
Yeah, well, for our city as a whole, flood protection is important. But I would say additionally, for this district that I'm looking to represent, District 4, it's especially critical, because District 4 is surrounded by water, both on the north and east sides. It's essentially an island, and so when we do face these 100-year or 500-year floods, we all, residents and community members both, want to make sure we are in a city that has the strongest flood protections possible. Our city's already done a great job partnering with local agencies, with regional agencies, with our legislative and congressional representatives, to make sure that we can get the funding, and have the ability to not only build the strongest flood protections, but to maintain those flood protections moving forward. When I serve on city council, I'll make sure we continue that hard work, so that every member of the West Sacramento community can feel safe and secure in their homes.
Thank you, Alex. Question to you, Verna. What do you believe are the right investments that our city needs to protect ourselves against flooding?
I feel like I've already answered that question. You know, one of my top priorities, it's been the top priority of the city for the last 15 years, is flood protection. You know, getting us to 200-year flood protection is incredibly important, and I know we're very, very close, and I applaud all of the leaders in the community who've taken that as a priority to get us where we're at, because I can see the levy from my house. I think it's also important, as we're doing this, waterways are also our biggest asset, and making sure that if there's possibilities to access the waterfront in different spaces, that we look to do that. You know, District 4 has this incredible opportunity to be this recreation gateway to the south, and making sure that while we're building these, should just say strengthening these levies, we're still creating safe access to the waterfront, and what that looks like. I think the community has done a great job moving so far, because we can actually access the levy, and we can walk it now. We've got the Sacramento Yacht Club on the water, which is incredible facility that actually gives you waterfront access. But making sure that all the partners are working together, so at the end of the day, we get our 200-year flood protection, and we can protect our community, because, you know, our homes there are our family's biggest assets, and we need to make sure that we're protecting that, and protecting all of the families who are living there.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right, we'll conclude tonight with your closing statements. Verna, you will go first. You have two minutes.
Thank you to the chamber, thank you to everybody who's spending their Tuesday night with us online. It's been a pleasure to be here. We've only been able to cover a handful of issues. I know that the comments in the chat right now are absolutely blowing up, and I think this online format is wonderful, but only so much is able to be answered and spoken about. Would like to share that my website has been updated with 11 of my priorities, and kind of plans on how I look to execute those, so please visit my website. But I'd like to meet you, if we have not had the opportunity, or haven't knocked on your door yet. This Friday night, I'm going to be at Kildare Farms, which is a local flower farm here in West Sacramento, for their pumpkin-picking pop-up. Say that five times fast. And I'd love for you to come out, to not only support a local farm, but to meet me. I've got some information about our new districts, and I'd love the opportunity to just chat with you more in person. You know, I'll say it before, and I'll say it again, I love West Sacramento, and we have so much opportunity. I am looking forward to partnering with our school district, our current city council members, our mayor, to continue to provide opportunities for all the families in West Sacramento. The last 20 years, I've built a very strong resume of building coalitions and partnerships, and creating programs that really move the needle and make change in the communities I serve. And I want to continue doing that in West Sacramento, and it would be an honor to serve as your next city council member. Thank you.
Thank you, Verna. Alex, two minutes for your closing statement.
Well, I want to personally thank everyone who's stuck through and is taking the time at almost 8 o'clock on a weeknight to watch this video, and to pay attention to this forum, because this is incredibly important to the future of West Sacramento. Local elections matter. Local government is the level of government that impacts our daily lives more than any other level. Safe streets, public safety, parks and amenity, places to work, places to shop, places to dine, all of this is affected by our local government. All of this falls under the purview of city council, and you can trust with me that I take that responsibility very seriously. I have lived my entire life with the belief in service over self. That's why I have a public service career. That's why I volunteered in our community for over a decade, or almost a decade now, working with the friends of the library and on various city commissions. It's because making sure our West Sacramento community is the strongest, most vibrant, most successful place possible is deeply important to me. I have the vision of a brighter West Sacramento future, where all of us can succeed, and all of us can thrive. Even though I'm running to represent District 4 on West Sacramento City Council, I'm running to serve all of us, because I know that we are one community, and that we are all successful, and every corner of West Sacramento has a wonderful place to live. I'm proud to have the endorsement of people and organizations who share that same vision. I'm proud to be endorsed by our West Sacramento firefighters, by West Sacramento working families, by West Sacramento Mayor Martha Guerrero, and over 20 elected and appointed current and former West Sacramento officials. All of them support me, because they share that same vision, that we can achieve that bright West Sacramento future if we work together. That's what I'll do on city council, and as you see me over the next few weeks, supporting local businesses or knocking on your doors, please say hi and share your thoughts about how we can achieve that future together. Thank you.
Wonderful job to you both. I want to thank you both for being here, sharing your thoughtful I want to thank you both for being here, sharing your thoughtful approaches to so many of our city's critical issues. For our online viewers, this brings our Candidates Forum to a close. Again, I want to thank all of the candidates who have been here this evening and for taking the time to share with all of you. I want to thank Spring Hill Suites in West Sacramento for allowing us to use your space. Recording of this forum will be available on the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce's website and our YouTube channel, so be on the lookout for that tomorrow. I want to thank all of you, our online audience, for taking part in this important program, and I encourage all of you to vote on November 8th. This forum was a presentation of the West Sacramento Chamber of Commerce as a community service to our businesses and our residents. I am so humbled and honored to have been the moderator tonight. Thank you again, and on behalf of the chamber, have a great night.